Morning, everyone. Welcome to Elgin County, a greater council meeting for January 28th. Adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on January 14th, 2025 be adopted.
Any errors or omissions? Did I see a mover and a seconder, please? Hans and Noble? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Not seeing any. We'll move down to presentations, petitions and delegations. First, we have Betsy McClure, manager of communications stewardship and outreach for the Kell Creek Conservation Authority. And Betsy, we report reporting on Elgin Clean Water Association 2024 annual report. Welcome, Betsy.
Thanks, Warden Jones and members of council. Next slide. So I thought I'd provide an overview of the program today and just a highlight of what we accomplished in 2024. The Elgin Clean Water Program was initiated in 2012 by the four Elgin Conservation Authorities. And it is open to all farm and non-farm landowners across the county. The programs provides technical support and funding to landowners to help support them implement environmental projects on their properties. And Elgin County Council first approved funding support for the program in the 2016 budget. And then in 2017, council approved $40,000 in annual funding in support of the program. The Green Lane Community Trust Fund as well has also provided matching funding since 2015. Next slide. The program supports a number of projects on landowners' properties, including erosion control, like you can see in this photo here. Wetland and riparian restoration, so wetland creation and enhancement or riparian projects that address erosion or enhance habitat. We also implement livestock projects, projects such as fencing to restrict livestock access to creeks or wetlands. We also provide funding to help support upgrades to wells or decommissioning old wells. And then we have another category called other projects, which basically allows a landowner to implement any other worthwhile project that meets the goals of clean water habitat creation. So projects that typically have fallen under this category include Tallgrass Prairie Establishment. But we've also completed projects like creating a snake hibernaculum. Next slide. Over the years, we've completed a lot of projects, so 340 projects have been completed since 2012. And the total project cost for all of those projects is $3.9 million. Over $930,000 has been provided from the Elgin Clean Water Program to support these projects. We also work with project partners to ensure that we can match funds, to ensure that the fund, the projects get as much funding as possible. So we're always working closely with Ducks Unlimited, Alice Elgin, or the Elgin Stewardship Council to secure as much funding as possible. Next slide. An interesting fact, consistently since the program started, wetland creation has been the top implemented project in most years. And 43% of the projects completed to date have been wetland projects. Next slide. Here's a map of all the projects that have been completed to date across the county. As you can see, there is a good distribution across all the municipalities and townships. Next slide. So these are the highlights from last year. We had 22 projects completed and you can see the breakdown of those projects on your screen. $72,000 was provided in Elgin Clean Water funding to support the projects. We were able to help landowners secure over $150,000 in matching funding for those projects. Landowners also contributed $25,000 of their own funds or in-kind contribution. And total project costs near $250,000. Next slide. And you can go ahead. I'm going to just highlight a few of the projects that we did accomplish in 2024. So as mentioned previously, wetland creation projects continue to be the most funded project category. And in 2024, that was no exception with 11 projects completed. Wetland creation is important. Less than 30% of the original wetlands remain in Southern Ontario. And as you all probably know, wetlands help to slow and store agricultural runoff, reduce flooding and soil erosion, improve water quality, and also enhance wildlife habitat. So these are just some of the examples of the wetland projects that we were able to implement this year. Next slide. This project, significant gully erosion was happening in two locations, impacting the agricultural land on this BAM Township property. So CA staff designed a solution, which included the construction of berms with a drop pipe structure and overflow spillways, helping to slow and control the flow of the water before it reached the gully. Next slide. This next project was five acres of Tallgrass Prairie that was established along the Lake Erie shoreline in Dutton Dunwich to restore habitat for shoreline species and enhance biodiversity. So over 15 species of native grasses and wildflowers were planted. Species included Virginia mountain mints, black-eyed susan, butterfly milkweed, and a variety of native grasses. Next slide. There was also this project that we considered large-scale restoration. This farmer had two small agricultural fields on his property that totaled 11 acres. They were inconvenient to farm, so he was interested in restoring these two fields to create more habitat on his property. We developed a plan to construct wetlands in one in each of the fields. As you can see with the map, the two blue polygons there, and they were created using the natural topography of the land. In addition, 3.5 acres of Tallgrass Prairie was established around the largest cell, wetland cell, and the remaining areas were planted with over 5,000 native tree and shrub seedlings. Next slide. We continue to get positive feedback about the program, not only the importance of the funds to make the projects a reality, but also the support of the CA staff and the ease of the process. So this is just in a sample of some of the feedback we received from our 2024 landowners. Next slide. That's all I have to present today, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the program.
Thank you, Betsy. Great job. Any questions for Betsy? Counselor Zegar, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Again, congratulations on this program. I think it is a very successful program. And so full disclosure, I have benefited from this program on my own property. But I've also served on the Elgin Stewardship Council for over a decade, and I've visited dozens and dozens of projects and can vouch for the success and the acreage, the total acreage of land restoration is quite beneficial. Now, I will say, then I can speak firsthand for the, what a wetland looks like after 10 years. So, and so of two requests. One is that a future report, so next year will almost be the 10th anniversary of the program. If the report could also include visiting projects from all the different years to kind of see the evolution. Because often the pictures that you see in this report are this year's project. And the wetland in the first year looks very different than a wetland or a Tallgrass Prairie 10 years later. So that's my first request. The second request would be that a portion of the funding be created, be allotted, and there'd be like a specific stream to help landowners who have benefited from the program, but maybe five, seven, 10 years ago, and now need help to maintain their... I don't know if you all know this, but that certainly was a big of a shock to me that these kinds of projects is not like a one and done. It requires additional investment. If you do a burn, it can be upwards of $10,000. If you need to do fragmities or other invasive species management, it's also big dollars. And the frustration is that at Roamont just last week, there was a promotion of the fragmities control program. But those programs are not available to individual landowners. So that funding is usually applied, you know, by municipality, by other organizations, and then the landowner applies. So this, I really think, I mean, right now, I think the program's covered a really good chunk of the county. And of the 340 projects, I bet you a lot of them would need some support. And I think in order to protect our investment, so we've all invested. And then if we all let them go back to either frags or other invasive, then all of that money and those efforts would be wasted. So I'll leave it at that. I think if council would support a request from that, from this moment on, that perhaps come back with a proposal of how you would like to structure that, but that a portion of that funding and that be a stream for landowners who want to some help, you know, five years later or 10 years later. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead, Betsy.
Thank you, Warden Jones. Through to Counselor Zegar. So you're absolutely right. We experienced this, and I should note that Counselor Mike Kent is on the review committee for the Elgin Clean Water Program. So the council does have a voice in this program. It was just last year, actually, that the committee started to talk about this. As our, our program has evolved, now we have a lot of established projects. And so at the time, we discussed maintenance of projects and wanting to obviously ensure that the investment is sustained. So we did complete our first maintenance of an old project in 2024. But I can hear what you're saying, and I'll certainly take it back to the committee, and we can discuss how that looks moving forward.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation this morning. Betsy is well done. Question for 2025. I assume the applications are coming in now. What does the level of activity look like for 2025? How would that compare with past years?
Through you, Warden Jones, to Counselor Ketchba. So applications are being received right now. Good response so far. We don't have set deadlines in the program. It is as they are received so that projects can be implemented in the timelines they're required. But so far, a good amount of projects have been received.
Counselor Woodner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through to Betsy, and it was a good presentation. Like, my family's been the recipient of three ponds over the last couple of years, and it's just incredible, the wildlife, the way it changes it. Because you go down there, there's footprints all over, and you have everything from turkeys to deer to the squirrels. Go visit it, because otherwise, no place for water. So I think it's a great program, and anybody that's interested should look into it. Thank you.
Counselor Hance, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and excellent report, Betsy. And I do sit on the committee and enjoy it very much, and I look at the cumulative effect of what's going on here. And in my own municipality, we've got a number of projects along the lake shore, and it's just not a one-off. It's an area that is transformed. So we're bringing so much natural diversity to a large area here. So it's a worthwhile project, and I enjoy sitting on it, and I look forward to their first meeting this year. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing no further questions, we have a resolution.
Resolved that the presentation from the Elgin Clean Water Association be received and filed, and that council request that the Elgin Clean Water Association provide a proposal to utilize a portion of the funds for landowners with existing projects to maintain their investment.
Did I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Zegar and Counselor Hance? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Betsy. Next, we have Karen Davies, President and Chief Executive Officer of the St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital, and a case for a new facility. Welcome, Karen, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing us some time here today. With me, I have Mr. Dan Ross, our board chair, and Mary Lou Crowley, who's the president of our hospital foundation. And before I get started, I just want to level set the purpose in coming today. So we post COVID or want to get back into a better routine of making sure that we're keeping city and council members updated. So coming here twice a year, general information on the hospital and be available to answer any questions that you might have. So in case you saw the news last night, I'm not coming here with an ask. I'm coming here to update you on our current information about the hospital. And yes, we need a new hospital, and that wouldn't be news to anybody in this room here, and I'm going to give you some reasons and statistics why. Next slide. So you know that we have an aged infrastructure. If anybody drives by Elm Street, you'll know that that building is well over 70 years old now. Next slide. Next slide. What I'm going to do is just, and you've got these in your packages here. We are one of the largest employers here in Elgin County, and that's something we're really proud of. But I like to remind people of that. It's, the hospital is a very important institution in Elgin County. We have seen tremendous growth. We are considered a medium-sized hospital. We're funded for 179 beds. And our numbers are increasing, escalating year over year. So this year, we'll exceed 1,000 births. That's a lot for a hospital. In past years, we would have seen anywhere from 5 to 700. We'll have over 10,000 surgeries, and even as I look at these numbers on the slides, we're exceeding them. We'll be well over 2 million lab tests, over 20,000 outpatient visits, and probably over 60,000 emerge visits as well. And so we serve a very large population, and we also have a drift that comes from the London Middlesex area as well down to our area. And the number says 10 up there, but right now, we really see anywhere from 14% to 18% of our daily volume in the emerge are coming from London Middlesex. And that's fine. We're all helping each other. We're all in this, this game together. Next slide. So medium-sized hospitals do face different challenges, and often it's geographically where you're located. The funding is different compared to some of the larger academic partners that we see. We have disproportionately higher levels of people who don't have access to primary care. You will have all seen Dr. Jane Philpott's announcement yesterday of 1.4 billion over four years, which is really important. But in the absence of primary care, the hospital often becomes the backstop for a lot of healthcare issues in your community. And we've got lots of capital equipment needs. I'll use the North Tower as an example. We just moved in there in 2018, and we're already planning for end-of-life equipment in there. And so we have a, as you know, a cash flow problem as well, so we're always working with our foundation to make sure that we have enough funding to keep moving forward. Next slide. And we know that we have a growing and aging population. That's not new to anyone in here in predicting 6.8% population growth, which is higher than the Ontario average. So we've been paying more attention to that. The population projections we're looking at are quite staggering. And we need to be, make sure that we've got the healthcare resources ready for the community. We know that we're struggling today with the current population, and that's ahead of the booms that will be coming with not just ongoing population growth, but VW coming to the community. We're seeing chronic illness escalate, not different than anywhere else in the province. We're seeing an increase in the addictions homelessness problem that impacts us and violence as well. And so we've recently this year gone into have our own in-house security, which is new for us. And that's something that we've needed to do because of the increased violence that we see in the hospital. We work very closely with the St. Thomas Police. And in late 2024, we've, how all of our security guards now have body cameras on them that are also aligned with St. Thomas Police. And we're probably one of the first in the province as a hospital to take that step. And that should give you just a little bit of inkling of the violence issues that we do face on a daily basis there. And the shortage of primary care home and community, it's affecting everybody. Next slide. So this is a picture of our emergency department room that opened in 2018. So this is before any action was seen in it. That's why it looks so new. And again, we're expecting to probably surpass 60,000 visits this year. That exceeds university hospital visits and also the urgent care in St. Joe's. And I like to raise that, not from a competitive nature, but because to give you the size and scope of the activity that we see here in the community. It's often underappreciated. Our substance abuse-related emergency visits are up significantly. I was very pleased to see the applications that were successful yesterday through the Heart Hub applications. Unfortunately, Elgin County did not receive one, although we did submit one with 18 other partners in the, in the community. And we're very disappointed we didn't get one, but we'll keep doing the great work with our community partners. And our mental health patients on the outpatient side have increased by 50% as well. Next slide. And so the reason I bring this here is I just want all of you to be always aware of what are the healthcare needs of the community, not just today, but as we look down the road, five, 10, 15, next slide, 20 years, 30 years down the road. And so we're doing a lot of planning right now with architects and design to make sure that we, we know we need a new facility. What does that look like? It's a long game. This is not something that's going to happen in the next 12, 18, 24 months. And so we're working to submit this into the ministry so that we can get into the queue to get approval to move forward with the new build. Right now, we're just at the stage of working with the architects of what would our options be? And so we'll work through that and have that wrapped up by June. We had to fund that on our own dollar, and that's costing us about $700,000 to complete this part of the process. But we have an aging infrastructure. We're at a tipping point with the volumes that we're seeing. We're a lean hospital. We're very efficient, and we have the ability to move people through in an efficient way. But efficiency will only take you so far. And with the old building and the rapidly growing population and the aging demographics, it's the perfect storm here. And a new hospital will allow us to, not just to continue to lead, but also to make sure that the populations down the road are well cared for. Next slide. Some of the challenges that we have, so we have over $42 million as of right now in deferred maintenance. It's an old building, and so you know what a 70-year-old building looks like. We don't have the cash flow to do this. We do get funding annually through something called a HERF fund. It's never enough. It's anywhere between one and a half to 2.2 million dollars. And so we're working to, how do we address all of these capital demands as we're also still trying to give care in the face of increasing volumes? Right now, we currently have 75 to 80 staff who park off-site every day. And that's just to make sure that we have parking for our patients and their families as they come. As you know, we're landlocked. We have inadequate inpatient accommodation as we sit today. We don't have private bathrooms. We have bathrooms that are not wheelchair accessible. And it's a massive problem when you've got a lack of private rooms, when you have issues like COVID and you need to isolate. We still have ongoing issues that require isolation, whether that's measles. I mean, there's lots of diseases right now that we're seeing increase. Next slide, please. So if I look at today's building that we're living in right now, and part of the process in working with the developers and architects, they're giving us what we would need today, should we be building a new hospital right now? For example, our NICU, which cares for infants that are newborns but requiring intensive care, it would be 93% larger. So we provide care to four to a max of six babies right now. We're trying to grow that program because, again, we want to help our partner, and our partner being London. We're the only hospital outside of London that has an NICU and pediatric beds in our region. Our emergency department that just opened in 2018, if built by today's standards, would be 42% larger. And just to manage the volume we're putting through today, we'd have 15 more patient care rooms. And so just again, to give you the efficiency, pharmacy would be 61% larger. We just put in a precap to have a new pharmacy built. It's in the oldest part of the building, which doesn't meet any of the standards around pharmacy right now. Our team works very hard to make sure that it's safe and it's, everything is safe. I want to assure you when I say we're not meeting standards, but that's a $2.4 million project right there to get a new pharmacy, and we can't wait for a new hospital to do that. And continuing care is the area that looks after a lot of our population who would be there for rehab, long-term complex care, ALC, that space as well. You'll see that it would be 138% larger. And by 2023, we'll need 83% more square footage. Next slide. And next slide. And so these are just some of the news clips. You've all seen them, but some of the driving forces behind why we're seeing more people come to our merge and also why we're planning for an even larger influx of people that are going to need healthcare services in Elgin County. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. We continue to do exceptionally well in the region with our emergency room metrics. We've been either number one to number three for the last 10 years. It's something we're very proud of. It's very difficult to maintain, and we've seen some of those metrics start to slip, but it's something we stay focused on. We're also very efficient in bed turnover. And so for the volume that we see with having 179 beds, we're in the top tier in the, in the province for efficiency and moving patients through. So that's a good thing to hear. Our culture is exceptional. I mean, the culture makes an organization. I'm very grateful for the teams that we have there. We have just recently refreshed our mission, vision and values and our strategic pillars with lots of good input from the staff, and just going through that process is really validated. Now, what a great team we have there. I'm very proud of them. And so the next slide, please. I'm just going to show you a quick video. This is a two-minute maybe video at most that we shared and created for our staff to share on New Year's Eve this year. It's a little bit late to be saying Happy New Year, but I thought it was a nice slideshow that summarized some of the activities that took place last year in 2024. Our regional hospitals in our area and all of our community citizens as well. And you have a great hospital in your community, and I just want to make sure that you know that. And with that, I'll turn it over, Warden Jones, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Karen. Great presentation. Any questions for Karen? Counselor Noble, go ahead.
Through you, Warden Jones. Thank Karen for the presentation. The 42.5 million for deferred maintenance is an interesting number, and I think important for everybody to look at. If we're a couple of years out on building a new hospital, is there a plan to continue to spend money on that one to keep it up to date? And how up to date and how far out would that be?
Thank you. That's a great question. And so we prioritize your, every single year. And you'll know because for this year, for example, the capital needs that we should be doing are about 9 million. We'll probably get 2 million. So we're constantly prioritizing what's the greatest risk in the building. And your question about building, it won't be built in two years. And so this is a long game. I mean, the long game. So we're looking at five to 10 years. And so I still need that building to be safe and efficient today. I keep, I'm kept up at night worrying about pipes bursting, cold as it was last week. So we're constantly prioritizing and whatever the need is. Does that answer your question?
And then I guess the other question I have is with the 42 in deferred maintenance, is that, is the pool part of that? No? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sloan, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Karen. Tell us a little bit what happens to the current asset after the new build, please.
Karen, could you?
My apologies. Thank you. I'll leave it on. If we were to move for a green filled site, we've already given lots of thought to what would that campus still be used for? There's lots of potential there. So just to give you a sense of what that might be, we could use that North Tower as an example. It's still going to be, remember, 15 to 20 years old by the time this happens. But it does have a reprocessing unit. It has an emergency department. There's operating room suites in there. And there's the mental health on the top floor. So that would easily be used, could be used for day programs. It could be used for primary care. The emergency- The emergency center would make a wonderful urgent care site in the city, and we would use the reprocessing center as well because you could have a day, inpatient day surgery on the second floor. So lots of talk right now about more and more privatized surgical centers. There's lots of potentials for that site as well as long-term care. And that has to be part of our submission that we give when we complete the current master planning process of what would this site be used for.
Thank you. Definitely, we do need an urgent care center in the city, that's for sure. Any other questions? Counselor here, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just curious, what, what is the process of what are your next steps on this journey?
We have to submit something that's called a Stage 1.2 to the Capitol branch of the ministry. And what that does is it, it has all of our master programming. So what clinical programs do we need and will we be providing in the hospital? And the master planning, which is the building? So we have to submit to them all of that, which we're aiming to have done by June. It goes to our board for approval first, and in that, you have to submit three options for what your future could be. And the options will be a brand-new greenfield site and then two hybrid options. And one, the hybrid option would be to have potentially keep acute care and rebuild on the current site and put long-term continuing care off-site ambulatory care services. And the other one would just have that reversed, where you would build the acute care off-site, and then you would keep that site for long-term care, ambulatory care services. It's a long process, I'll tell you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any other questions, so thank you very much for coming in, Karen. It's nice to touch base once or twice here, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Warden Jones, for your time. And remember, you'll always know where to find me if you have any questions. And I look forward to coming back in the fall.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Resolved that the presentation from the St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital be received and filed.
Uh, Noble moves. Second or, second or Pence? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving down to committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
Mover and second please. Widner, uh, Counselor Latham, we'll get Counselor Latham on the, on the docket. All in favor? Motion carries. First report, six point one, Director of Engineering Services, King Bridge Replacement Tender. Go ahead, Peter. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of county council. As part of the 2024 and 2025 capital budget, a tender was advertised for the replacement of the King Bridge. King Bridge is a fourteen-meter-long concrete rigid frame structure, and it's located about three kilometers west of Imperial Road on Ron McNeil Line. It was originally constructed in nineteen forty-seven. G Douglas Valley Limited is the contractor by the county in 2024, and they completed the design and will be providing the engineering and inspection services for the project. The total number of twenty-three contractors downloaded the tender and eight contractors submitted pricing for the replacement of King Bridge. The lowest compliant bid was from Gary D. Robinson Contracting for a total price of 1.578 million dollars. The 2024 capital budget allocated 1.53 million dollars toward the project, and an additional $200,000 will be proposed in the 2025 budget to complete the financing for the project. A precast concrete structure was purposely selected to expedite the construction on this project because the roadway will have to be closed for an approximate ten-week period, and it'll utilize a detour route that uses Imperial Road, Lions Line, and Belmont Road during that timeframe. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Peter. Questions for Peter? The first time I glanced at the report, I saw King. I said, oh, no, King George again. Anyway. Not seeing any questions or concerns? We have a resolution, please?
Resolved that Gary D. Robinson Contracting be selected to complete the King Bridge Replacement Project, tender number 2024 T-29 at a total price of 1,578,446, inclusive of a $75,000 contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Mover and second please. Ketchba and Witner, further questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Peter. Next, Director, pardon me, Director of Community and Cultural Services, relocation of the Elmer Library Branch to the East Elgin Community Complex. Welcome, Brian. The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to county council. I'm pleased to be joined today by Natty Marlowe, our manager of library services, and Delene Van Zill, our supervisor for the Elmer Branch. This report is in response to Elmer Town Council's request at the county forum committee to advance the matter of the Elmer Library and also recent direction from the Board of Directors of the East Elgin Community Complex to determine county council support for relocation of the branch to the complex. Today, we are seeking county council's endorsement in principle to relocate the Elmer Branch to the complex. There's a fair bit to unpack in this report, and for the most part, I'm going to let it stand as presented to you, but I do want to draw your attention to a few matters as follows. I wanted to give you background on county council's role as the governing authority for the Elmer County Library System and the authority this council has in terms of determining the location of branches and the leasing arrangements for them. I also wanted to give you the legislative context behind your role. I had to pull some of the stuff out of the archives, of course. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions you may have regarding this legislative context, but to get to the point, the Elmer County Public Library Board does not exist, and any deliberate references to such a board only serves to confuse our model of governance. I felt important to clarify other aspects of the letter, report, and delegation you received from the town C O back in December, specifically as it relates to governance and administration and what is within the town's jurisdiction and what is not within the town's jurisdiction. Further, we have never considered any branch to be a main branch or greater area library, though each branch may provide a different level of service. I also want to clarify the scope of comments by, made by Delene during her presentation to Elmer Town Council back in September. All of our supervisors do periodic presentations to our municipal partners, and I know we've received nothing but great feedback on those presentations to your respective councils to keep you informed on branch activities and any issues that may pertain to the buildings that you own. Delene did a good job in outlining Elmer Library's solid performance and impact in the community while at the same time addressing head-on the serious challenges we are experiencing in delivering our services in the amount of space we have. Her comments were strictly in the confines of space issues and did not delve into matters such as staffing levels or hours of operation. I also want to stress to county council that we were never given direction on a $500,000 fundraising goal for Elmer Library for an expansion project and what that expansion would, would actually involve. Seeking donations for a capital build is outside of the scope of charitable donations we normally receive for library purposes. The CEO's delegation also made reference to successful fundraising efforts for a branch and a neighboring system and how we may learn from those efforts. I can assure this council that our team has a solid track record of supporting successful library fundraising efforts when a viable plan is put on the table, as was demonstrated in our last major project in support of the Township of South Falls efforts that successfully raised approximately $800,000 and resulting in the current location of our Sheddham Branch. So with that out of the way, the East Elgin Community Complex Board has made an initial expression of interest in accommodating the Elmer Branch at the complex that has the potential to address longstanding space needs. We have previous design work which demonstrated that this relocation is feasible, subject to necessary modifications that the complex board would have to make at their expense. I have outlined in the report leasing and financial considerations should a future move occur with a placeholder of 10,000 square feet. And Jen and I are certainly willing to answer any further questions you have about that aspect of the report. Should council wish to move in the direction of relocation of the branch to the complex, I do think we should seek Elmer Town Council's endorsement on such a move out of respect as a longstanding partner and because of the impact to the current location. Council can then determine how we, we proceed from there based on that feedback. So in closing, let me reiterate that the value and importance of the Elmer Library has not been the source of contentious debate in the community. In fact, it's because of the fact, how well-used the library is, that it continues to be the source of, of how do we expand in the future. The branch's performance remains strong, and I have to commend Delene and her team for the creative and well-attended programs and services we run. And with March break coming up, I encourage you to come out and observe those if you're able. But as staff, we have devoted significant time and frankly, a lot of emotional capital over the past two decades towards community engagement and development of plans to expand the branch. However, sometimes you have to learn to pick your spots. And based on this past experience, it may seem that our profile has been lower on this matter because that, that is because there's not been a concrete opportunity to expand the branch recently. In the meantime, we have continued to provide the very best level of service we can to the community in the space we have available, and that will always be our commitment. However, we do not see the point of establishing yet another committee to study options for future expansion of the branch when the only immediate option before us after twenty years of debate is relocation to the complex. We have pointed out on multiple occasions why the status quo should not be the option. There is still a journey to take on this matter that will inevitably have its own bumps and curves as we proceed, but today, we are seeking county council's endorsement to at least explore the path of relocation to the complex, which is within your jurisdiction to decide. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions county council may have.
Thank you, Brian. Counselor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. More of a series of comments than, than questions. First of all, thank you, Brian, for that very thorough and heartfelt report. You know, you're really dealing with two separate areas here, one dealing with comments on the county's library governance, and secondly, the recommendation concerning the, the complex. We did not wish to convey that we being Elmer, I guess, or the Royal, we did not wish to convey that Elgin County Cultural Services was doing anything wrong at all. In fact, we certainly commend the running of the Elmer Library as being extraordinary. The issue of a library board or no library board or just plain being board is not something that Elmer is concerned about. So I apologize for our pushing that envelope to the edge of the desk. The unanimous motion that came from the complex was that the co-chairs, Wedden, I quote, "Contact the Director of Cultural Services of Elgin County respecting the potential for county services to be provided in the East Elgin Community Complex space." Potential for county services. Maybe, maybe we could create a county art gallery there. But no, I think seriously, the, the request concerned the library. It's really about the library. So Counselor Girer and I met with Brian and, and talked about the possibilities for a library. And in fact, there are, as Brian pointed out, there are existing floor plans for a library at that complex that have been around for a while. There, there have been, that I can recall, two former occasions in which the complex, the East Elgin Community Complex Board turned down this suggestion in the past, twice. So this is indeed a new situation. I also believe that this is the first time that Cultural Services, Community and Cultural Services, has recommended a particular location for the Elmer Library, which is, to be fair, a response to the request by the complex. So I guess parting comment is that we do, I do, and, and hopefully Elmer Council as well, look forward to, to debating this and engaging in public engagement, and I thank Cultural Services for taking the lead on this. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you, Jack. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Counselor Cookett, county council. The other thing that has fundamentally changed since we last contemplated the complex is the lease that we had with the Town of Elmer was a forty-year agreement, and it expired at the end of 2022. And at that time, it did require the Town of Elmer to break that lease. And, and so in light, light of, you know, the recent feedback, and now that we're in the standard lease that all the library branches have, we have those provisions now to be able to move forward with leasing options. So at the time, if, if, if the Town of Elmer Council did not agree to relocate the library or break the lease, we, we were, we were dead in the water, and that's exactly what happened last time. So we're in a fundamentally different leasing arrangement now that also changed the dynamic on this discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any further comments or questions, so Catherine.
Resolved that Elgin County Council endorses in principle the relocation of the Elmer Branch of the Elgin County Library to the East Elgin Community Complex and that Elmer Town Council be requested to endorse in principle the relocation of the Elmer Branch of the Elgin County Library to the East Elgin Community Complex and that the Director of Community and Cultural Services report back to county council regarding next steps in the process to accommodate the Elmer Branch of the Elgin County Library at the East Elgin Community Complex, including opportunities for public consultation, and that Elmer Town Council's request to establish a committee to advance the matter of a greater Elmer Area Library be received and filed based on the information contained in the report titled "Relocation of the Elmer Library to the East Elgin Community Complex" from the Director of Community and Cultural Services dated January 28th, 2025, and that copies of this report be circulated to the councils of the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide.
Recorded vote?
Please indicate yea or nay when I call your name.
Excuse me, do we have a motion, mover and a second for this?
You are correct. Could I have a mover and a second for the motion? Counselor Cookett and Counselor Girer. Oh, now we got a call.
Counselor Richard Latham.
Yea.
Counselor Mike Hentsch. Counselor Andrew Sloan.
Yea.
Counselor Todd Noble.
Yes.
Counselor Dominique Girer.
Yea.
Counselor Mark Widner. Deputy Warden Ed Ketchba.
Yea.
Warden Grant Jones.
Yea.
Nine zero, the motion is carried. Oh, sorry. I, I get, I must be nervous. Counselor Jack Cookett. My apologies.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, moving down to six three, Manager of Administrative Services, Deputy Clerk, Pre-Budget Consultation Feedback. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to county council. Council will remember that at our meeting on January 14th, council directed staff to provide a pre-budget consultation submission to submit to the Ministry of Finance in lieu of an in-person delegation with the Minister of Finance, as those are occurring during our meeting today. So the direction was to first send it to the Growth Planning Steering Committee, which happened on Friday, with the recommendations that we utilized some of the information that we had presented in our last submission to the Ministry of Finance, which we did in 2023. So the requests from council originally were to, one, address the increased need for infrastructure funding, two, to request for a full refund of the provincial portion of the HST, and also to request a refund on the tax portion of the, of insurance premiums, and then to return the assessment rule. So a draft went to the Growth Planning Steering Committee on Friday, January the 24th, and the Growth Planning Steering Committee reviewed the submission and provided staff with the following feedback. One, that they wanted to include support and information about AMO's Social Economic Prosperity Review. So they recommended that county council express support for this call for this review and that they tie this review to the request for and that they tie this review to the request for additional infrastructure funding. And then an additional information be added to the information about returning the assessment role. So the committee suggested using specific data from one of Elgin's local municipal partners to demonstrate how an outdated assessment negatively impacts municipality. So I did reach out on Friday to the municipality of Bayham for this data, as they have this data already collected. And I did hear back, first thing just before our council meeting, I heard back from the treasurer at the municipality of Bayham. So he provided me some additional information, which I will let Council know right now. He said that the province's decision to pause phased-in reassessment will have an impact on the 2025 municipal levy. The municipality of Bayham generally realizes eight percent in annual assessment role book growth. Six point nine percent of this is from phased-in assessment growth, while one point one percent is from new assessment growth. In 2025, due to the deferral of the assessment update, the municipality projects that it will only receive three point one percent in total assessment growth. The lack of the phased-in assessment growth will result in tax levy increases to property owners who would not typically see as much or any levy increases with phased-in assessment growth. The phased-in reassessment is currently on hold. And he did note that in prior years, Bayham's new growth has actually been considerably less. It's usually in the range of point eight to one point nine percent. So it it has been seeing a bit more new growth, which skews the numbers a little bit more in the sense that in years where the growth isn't quite as strong, it does affect the municipality more. So I am recommending, the submission was sent out to Council yesterday afternoon. I did add information about the support for AMO and their position of a of a review with the province. And then I am happy if Council is willing to add the information from the municipality of Bayham, just to give a little bit more context and a concrete example to why Council is requesting that the assessment role be returned. I'm also happy to, any any other feedback and any other suggestions to incorporate before I submit it on February third? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Questions or concerns? So the committee had a good discussion about it. I think it's, it was a good decision, the way direction we've gone. Counsel Kirkett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We didn't have the opportunity this morning to actually ask questions of the of the minister, which was unfortunate. I did have a couple of questions that I had from a couple of suggestions that this council might consider to send to the minister. One simple one, but I think important, is that the the province provide increased funding for aging-at-home strategies, especially in rural and remote areas to reduce, I guess, the use of of emergency services, long-term care homes. There just doesn't seem to be enough aging-at-home possibilities or strategies. I was interested in hearing the mention of urgent care, which doesn't necessarily fit this particular thing, but I think it's part of the whole, the health approach. So I think, you know, Council feels right to add that. I did have, can I have another one? I did have one that, I guess, may impact Elmer more than other communities in in this area, but that is, that the complicated grant structure that the province has in terms of providing incentives for building homes, that the larger municipalities have a a number housing target of some sort, which if they meet that housing target, that the government would, you know, without a grant application, provide that municipality with added funds. Now, that does not exist for small communities or rural communities, and I think it should. They should allow communities like Elmer and Dunwich, Dunwich, and you know, the rest of us. It's actually Dunwich, Dunwich, I'm sorry. So that we could provide, you know, housing targets like any any other municipality, and therefore get get funds to apply for them. Currently, we get funding through economic economic grants, which we have to apply for, but we have to, already have expended a great deal of of money to build the economic infrastructure before we can apply for these grants. So I think it's unfair that we're kind of left out of that particular area. I'll leave it at those two. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kirkett. Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to to Council. Counsel Kirkett, I would certainly endorse that, particularly both streams or recommendations you're suggesting are valid and definitely in need. We know that there has been some funding allocated to aging at home, but you're right, the need is going to continue to grow, and I see nothing wrong with including something in the brief itself. It can't be very big, because I don't know if we have any research to support it, but still, there's, we could make mention of it. The second one, I couldn't endorse more, simplified grant structures for rural or smaller communities. I mean, this is something that I recall meeting with Minister Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs of the day, over in Flack's office a couple, three years ago. And we mentioned at that time that, you know, you want to do something for Elgin or do something for rural communities. Give us a funding stream specifically for infrastructure development in our smaller communities. Again, I don't know how detailed you can get in this particular brief, but I don't see anything wrong with having some kind of mention that this is an additional need that would support growth in these communities. We need infrastructure. But when we're competing against some of the larger centers out there, it's damn hard to get. I know that, you know, I'm aware of that the second phase for the enabling, whatever they call it, the housing-water fund. I know we were passed over it again in Bayham. It's because we can't meet the same target, same number of houses that other centers can with the funding. And that's unfortunate. So I don't know if Council's desirable to move forward with that. That would be great. I would support including a couple of sentences in that. With respect to Catherine, if I may, the comments Lauren provided you on assessment, I would strongly encourage you to to include that. It provides a bit of a context of which is contrary to what we're hearing from the province. Yes, delayed assessment roles or implementing those or updating those roles does have an impact on us. Yes, it preserves an inequity in in the system. And we aren't realizing the full potential of what the current assessment should be. With one other final comment, and I know we spoke about this privately, but I think, just to put it on the record, in the second paragraph of the brief talking about thanking the province for the the two unexpected funding streams we received last fall, with respect to the OMPF, rather than suggesting that it it definitely improves infrastructure, not really, but it does improve community services is the comment I would leave you with. And with that, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I I guess furthering Counsel Kirkett's comments with the general health care and aging at home. And we've had this discussion with Minister Jones at AMO, and we're shot down and hit a ball of fire. The thought that you need six doctors for a family health organization, that's the only possible solution that the province is looking at. In rural Ontario, that does not work. And for a county like Elgin, being so long and drawn out, that the idea that probably will never happen, because somebody has to have a building to support six doctors plus all the support services that go along with a health organization. That thought process of six doctors has to change in order for people to be able to age at home properly, be able to access their family doctor in a environment where they aren't having to drive for a half an hour and or find somebody to drive them to a doctor's appointment. So I think, but that's an issue that so far the province hasn't recognized. Maybe with this new announcement yesterday for family doctors, that could change, but still, the idea of six doctors in West Elgin or Dunwich is is pretty remote or in Elmer even. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I understand, I was attended with you to that particular delegation in AMO last year, and I understand what's getting at or what the minister was suggesting. We're talking about particular two different business models that are being contemplated out there amongst physicians, whether it's the 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 physician-owned facility, or whether it's a turnkey operation as a family health team. And I don't know if we want to get into that particular debate right here today. But I think what perhaps Counsel Kirkett may be alluding to is some of those existing services that we have, such as the paramedicine program, which is an opportunity to allow home care to take place in their residence. We have it here. But perhaps it is something that needs to be expanded to further accommodate the greater community. And I think an argument could be put forward in that respect. We already have the service, but you know, a little more resourcing would help it expand further across the county. That may be the simple illustration to use in this particular brief. I don't know if that's what Counsel Kirkett was thinking, or, but that's what I would use. Rather than getting into the argument on business models.
Any further comments, Catherine, to be, make your life more difficult? Okay. Go ahead.
Resolved that feedback from County Council be incorporated into the draft pre-budget consultation feedback documents, and that staff submit the pre-budget consultation feedback document to the Minister of Finance by the February third, 2025 deadline.
Mover and seconder, please. Counsel Kirkett, Counsel Hentsch. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And back to Catherine, Manager of Administrative Services, Municipal Accountability Act.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council. This is another advocacy submission. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing is seeking feedback from municipalities on the proposed changes to the Municipal Accountability Act 2024. The three main changes, proposed changes if passed, would, one, enable the creation of a standard municipal code of conduct and standard municipal integrity commissioner investigation process to help ensure consistency across all Ontario municipalities. Two, would create a role for the Integrity Commissioner of Ontario in municipal code of conduct and integrity commissioner matters, including providing training to municipal integrity commissioners. And then finally, to establish a mechanism to remove and disqualify members of council and certain local boards for a period of four years for the most serious code of conduct violations, following a recommendation from the local integrity commissioner, a concurring report from the Integrity Commissioner of Ontario, and a unanimous vote of council. At our last council meeting, County Council provided staff with the direction that while they were in agreement with the first two changes, they didn't think that the third change went far enough. Council had concerns regarding this change related to the removal and disqualification of a council member or a member of a local board. They, Council believed that the mechanisms provided were insufficient, and that removing a duly-elected individual from office is a very significant and highly controversial matter. And as such, Council recommended that, in addition to the steps that were recommended in the proposed legislation, that it go further, and that a third-party judicial review follow the integrity commissioner's ruling and the council's unanimous vote. So based on those recommendations, staff drafted a submission that was included in the report. And I would be happy to to take any additional feedback for anything else that might need to be changed or included before this is submitted by the February tenth deadline. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions or concerns? Go ahead, Counsel Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I totally agree with all this stuff. There's something that needs to be done, but it's interesting. You go to the Roma Conference, and all the provincial leaders stand up, and they just mean-mouth, and they slander each other. Maybe they should lead by example, because I certainly don't think they are, and it's the same with the federal. So I mean, while they're picking on us, maybe they should look in their own house first. I'm not very interested. Thank you.
I think everybody around this table would agree with the stuff that happens at the upper levels. Hey, I'm not seeing anything other than that. Have a resolution?
Resolved that the report titled Municipal Accountability Act from the Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk dated January sixteenth, 2025 be received and filed, and that any additional feedback from Council be incorporated into the letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing regarding proposed changes to the Municipal Accountability Act 2024, and that staff submit the letter by the submission deadline of February tenth, 2025.
Mover and seconder, please. Ziegler and Hentsch. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Richard, did you want to ask a question or you're just in favor? Just, just in favor? Thank you.
I was in favor, if that's what he was waiting.
Yeah. Yeah, we 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 figured that one out, Richard. Thank you. We can finish up Catherine's reports. Go ahead with your fifth report, your third report.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The report before you is a draft of the procedural bylaw incorporating all of the changes that have been previously discussed at the three council meetings that we had in 2024. So we met first on October twenty second and then talked about it again on November twelfth, and then again on December twelfth. So a bit of a summary at at the October twenty second, 2024 meeting, we began this process, and we went through a really long table with many suggested changes. In summary, they were one, to remove any discrepancies or redundancies across the entire bylaw, adding a section related to video equipment and recording devices, ensuring that notice procedures were consistent with our newly-updated Notice bylaw, 2415, clarifying the differences between a special meeting and an emergency meeting, and the requirements for notice related to these types of meetings, adding procedures for calling and providing notice for public meetings, and then consolidating Bylaw Amendment 2047 related to electronic participation in the updated bylaw. Because in our in our previous bylaw, we did not allow voting by by electronic participation, but we did create amendment based on changes to the municipal act. So just consolidating that into the main bylaw, clarifying the procedures for governing delegations, and approving a list of prohibited delegation topics. And then finally, reorganizing the rules of debate into one section and adding some additional procedures for clarification. So that was discussed at the meeting on October twenty second. At that time, Council also suggested a few other changes. They suggested looking into the inaugural meeting and annual election of the warden and the procedures related to that. And then finally, proposing changes to the structure of council to incorporate a more traditional council and then and then committee of the whole structure. So on November twelfth, Council did review proposed changes to Bylaw Amendment 2142, which governed the procedures related to the warden's election. Council provided feedback to staff, which they incorporated into a bylaw amendment, which was passed on November twenty sixth, in advance of our most recent warden's election. So this just recommends that that bylaw, 2440, be incorporated into the main body of the bylaw. And then on December twelfth, Council considered the proposed changes to the structure and did did agree in principle to splitting council meetings and committee of the whole meetings into two separate meetings, which will occur on the same day, giving time for items that are discussed and voted on in committee of the whole to have to have some time for the public to see that, and also for Council to think about it. And then they will be finally considered at the next council meeting under recommendations of committee of the whole. So this report is just an incorporation of all of those changes that were previously discussed into a draft bylaw, nicely formatted and numbered, and giving Council sort of a last opportunity to give it a review, and if there are any changes that that Council would like to make to this document that staff can incorporate before, the plan is to that staff can incorporate before, the plan is to bring it back for adoption on February 11th, but that it wouldn't come into force until April 1st, which would give some time for staff to update the templates for council meetings and also just to get used to the procedures. And then we do, we would like to bring an update to our committee bylaw as well in that time. There are a few housekeeping items. And then we just want to make sure that the bylaws are consistent with one another as well. So I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have regarding this draft bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thanks for all the hard work putting this together. Any questions? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Catherine, I know I brought this up on Friday at a committee meeting, but just for council's edification, does the procedural bylaw include language on how committee structures shall be run? Will they be under committee of the whole or will they be as per Robert's rules?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council. I believe that our committee bylaw indicates that that committees will follow the procedures in the procedural bylaw. So that is why we would like to also bring a committee bylaw update in advance of this bylaw coming into force, so that we can make sure that how committees op, that council agrees to how committees will operate. And it is my recommendation that committees would follow the rules of committee of the whole, so a more relaxed rules of debate as opposed to the rules of council. But that's why we'd like, one of the reasons that we would like the bylaw to come into force a few months after it's passed, so that we have time to bring that other adjacent legislation forward for consideration by council.
Okay. Good answer. Any other questions? If I see no other questions, we have a resolution.
Resolved that the report titled Draft Procedural Bylaw from the Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk dated January 28th, 2025 be received and filed, and that staff incorporate any additional feedback into a final version of the updated procedural bylaw, and that this report acts as notice of the intent to repeal bylaw 1941 and related amendments 2047, 2142, and 2440, and adopt a new bylaw to regulate the proceedings in the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin.
Mover and sec, please. Counselor Latham, Counselor Sloan, you want to get your name on the books? Counselor Sloan, seconds. Further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. And we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, welcome back. We'll get right back at it. First, we have council correspondence. We have one item, a resolution from the municipality of Central Elgin council regarding request for financial support for the hospice of Elgin. But anybody want to talk to this, Mayor Sloan or Counselor Sloan or?
I'll take either. Thank you very much, Warden. Through you, I'd like to make a motion. This be considered the budget committee, please.
Okay, thank you. Comments around the table? Need a, need a secretary. Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Specific motion regarding what's, what is the specific ask?
That the ask as, sorry, through you, Warden, to the deputy warden, but the ask as per the letter from Central Elgin be considered at the finance committee.
Is there a financial portion to that?
I'd bring it up at the committee, Warden. I'd like to get the input from the councillors around the table. And again, if, if that could be considered at finance, I don't know if I have a second or to the motion, but my motion is, is I would like it to be moved for consideration at finance.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Noble?
I'll second, and I believe the ask is $100,000.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, we have a mover and a sec, so I'll call the vote. There's no further questions. All in favor? Motion's carried. And moving down to items for information and send agenda, anything to highlight there? I will highlight the letter from Jim's screen since it was addressed to me and I have no further comment on this course of action. Do I motion to mover and sec to accept the correspondence? I guess you should have called, go ahead.
Resolved that correspondence items 7.2.1 to 7.2.2 be received and filed.
Mover and sec, please. Noble and Cookett? All in favor? Motion carries. Moving down to other business, statements or inquiries by members? Seeing none? Notice of motion? Seeing none? Matters of urgency? Seeing none? Move down to closed, closed meeting? We don't have closed meeting today. Never mind. Motion to rise and report. We don't have that either because we got a new closed session. Motion to adopt recommendations of committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Mover and sec, please. Counselor Jager, Counselor Hens. All in favor? Motion carries. Bylaws.
Bylaw number 2504, Joseph Street Speed Zone Amendment, being a bylaw to amend the schedule to bylaw number 2419, being a bylaw to authorize speed limits. Resolved that bylaw number 2504 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and sec, please. Noble and Sloan. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Bylaw number 2505 Confirmation, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the January 28th, 2025 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 2505 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and sec, please. Noble and Latham. All in favor? Motion carries. And last but not least, motion to adjourn.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 11:31 a.m. to meet again on February 11th, 2025 at 9 o'clock a.m.
Mover and sec, please. Whitner and Ketchba. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all. It's a great meeting and with lunch and off to the next.